Prior month's public comments. Seeing none, we'll move right along. This is, we'll move right into our public comment section. We got a lot of people signed up this evening. So, we're gonna try to move this along quickly. I'll call on someone and then let the person who's up next know that they are up next. And if you would, again, keep your comments to two minutes. And if you can swap out as quickly as possible, we'll move this along as efficiently as possible and listen to all the public comment. Also, please, some grace for me. There's names in here that I'm not familiar with, and I promise I'm doing my dead level best to get them right. I too have a name that's not pronounced correctly a lot of times, so I know how that goes. So, any grace for me that you could extend would be much appreciated. We're gonna start with Dee Stewart, and after Dee Stewart, we've got Jennifer Heinewithy. So, up first will be Dee Stewart, and then Jennifer Heinewithy behind her. Can you push them up?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dee Stewart. I use she/her pronouns, and I am president of PFLAG Vancouver, which chapter serves all communities in Clark County, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. As a representative of PFLAG and the queer community, I want to express my deep concern regarding Le Center School District Gender-Inclusive Policy and Procedures 3211, which directs school officials to notify students' parents if they show signs of questioning their gender identity. I graduated high school in 1974. Due to societal prejudice, misinformation, and discrimination, it was policy for most public schools to notify parents if a student appeared to be gay or gender nonconforming. I was witness to the severe consequences of outing a child to well-intentioned yet misinformed parents. If a student's parents were not accepting of their child's identity, the child was often removed from their school and friendships in order to quell their child's queerness. Many students were subjected to harmful conversion therapy, and in the worst cases, youth were severely beaten, and it was not uncommon to kick a child out of their home. I, for woman, was never able to repair the relationship with my parents. In conclusion, I have an ask and an invitation. Outing a transgender student to their parents can cause irreparable damage to the parent-child relationship if they are not prepared with correct information. I ask the Le Center School Board to modify its gender-inclusive schools policy and procedures 3211, and I invite you to attend PFLAG.
Next, next person to speak is gonna be Jennifer Heinewithy.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jennifer Heinewithy, and full disclosure, I am in the Battleground School District, but I wanted to come here tonight to say thank you and to give you some words of encouragement. I know this cannot be an easy position that you folks have been in, but you have done your best to honor students, but also honor parents. We know that the best thing for kids is a relationship where the parents have the responsibility and are given the responsibility to raise their kids with the values that they hold dear, and the Center School Board and District have shown that they want to support that. I understand that children who are confused about their gender, that's a hard situation to be in. We don't have a society like we used to where kids are beaten, or ridiculed, or taken out of school like they used to. Yes, I know things like this go on, but we also have something called Child and Family Services, and everybody up here are mandatory reporters as well as everybody who works for the district. And if a child is in a situation where they are at risk of being abused, I cannot think that a child coming out as transgender is the first time that they would be at risk of abuse. There has to be a history, and as mandatory reporters and responsible educators, you know who these kids are, and that's your duty, as well as the administration, to report that. So, I just want to encourage you and thank you for the position you've taken to support parents and families and children.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Lori Colvin. Behind Lori Colvin, we have Tom Strobin. Lori?
Thank you, board. I speak to you tonight as an educator, a lifetime educator. My husband is also an educator and administrator in education. I represent, well, I'm from Evergreen School District in Vancouver, previously Schmeck Community College in St. Lomoregan. This topic is very, very close to my heart. As educators, our role is to teach and form and support our students throughout their educational journey from the age of five through eighteen and sometimes beyond. It's not our responsibility to act as informants or moral arbiters. Based on my experience with personal friends and students within the LGBTQ+ community, our primary focus must always be on the well-being of the students and addressing the challenges they face. Adolescents in the teenage years are already fraught with enough stress as young people work to discover their identities and shape their futures. From my perspective as both an educator and a friend, I've observed that in approximately eighty percent of the cases, families struggle to accept the choices their young loved ones make. This lack of familial support often inflicts significant harm on these young individuals. If the board feels it's necessary to inform parents about a personal situation their child is navigating, it is vital to include the student in crafting a compassionate and thoughtful approach to minimize potential harm. Above all, our priority as educators must remain to be the safety and well-being of our children. They deserve the right to make decisions for themselves and respected by those who care for their growth and their happiness. Thank you so much.
And after Tom, we have Michael Terry. Michael Terry, if you could get ready when Tom is done, and switch right to you. Thank you.
Boy, I wish I could get a council meeting like this. This would be great. Good evening, council superintendent Rosenkrantz. I'm here to speak to and the residents of the city of Le Center. This isn't the first time or the last time our community has or will face adversity. We can go back to the fires of 1890s or the decrease of population from 1910 to 1950, the verge of bankruptcy in the early eighties, or the tribal relations at the beginning of this century. At each point, there's always been a fork in the road, the choices for the residents to make. Just like each of those examples and countless times before, the city has always chosen family and the betterment of community. Here we are staring down another challenge for this small town of 4,000 people, yet this challenge is different. The Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction of the state of Washington has directly attacked the residents of our city by saying our board, who are elected by each of you, are discriminating against our own children. We are being attacked on multiple fronts, from social media to news articles, reaching all the way to Florida. These articles are written by reporters that have never even been to Le Center. Our social media posts by people that have no idea of the values or lives in the city of Le Center, and many, if not most, follow the same rhetoric as OSPI. Residents know this couldn't be farther from the truth. Our community loves each other, loves each child here, and definitely doesn't spew the hatred that is insinuated. This community has stood together during more than one attack, and again, it will stand with each other hand in hand. In Le Center, the day starts with family and ends with family. Thank you for your time tonight.
And then after Michael Terry, we have Eunice Ingormanson. Eunice, if you could get ready right when Michael is done. Thank you.
Michael Terry, my wife and I are raising our family in the Battleground School District. God has blessed us with three beautiful children, two daughters, and my son is two. So, it's very busy in my house. I've seen all the changes here in Clark County over the last forty years, and my wife and I, and many, many thousands of local parents, thank each of you, Pete, all the staff, and you, board, for accurately representing our majority voice as parents. And it's extremely important within our constitutional republic for duly-elected officials to know their role and accurately represent our majority voice. There's been an extreme amount of sacrifice in our United States for these freedoms and liberties. My family line goes back twelve generations in our United States. My children are thirteenth-generation Americans. My dirt floor more grandfather, twelve generations back, Stephen Hopkins, was on the sea venture on the third supply mission to Jamestown. And when he was born, he was structured to kings, just born in the wrong family. There was no opportunity when you're born into the wrong family under the structure of kings. And so, lands on Jamestown after being caught in Hurricane The Tempest, shipwrecked for nine months, turned around, rebuilt ships, created a clean water source, food source. They made their way back to eventually Jamestown, served seven years with the Virginia Company, and made his way back to England where he eventually was on the Mayflower, making his way up to Massachusetts. Fourteenth signer of the Mayflower Compact, that's a very important document. That is the document, the very first document ever written that stated that the government would be structured to serve the people, and our constitution is modeled after it. He could've lost his life many, many times, and every single one of us has this in common. You have way more that unites us than divides us. Every single one of us has been our family line that made that life-threatening, life-changing decision to come here to our United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eunice Ingormanson, and after Eunice, we have Michelle Wallard.
Good evening, board. I am Ms. Ingormanson. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm your neighbor in Battleground. According to the 2023 Healthy Youth Survey, one in five youth in Clark County, as well as Washington State in general, identify as LGBTQ+. That means if you have three or more children in your family, you're more likely than not to have a rainbow child. I would like to offer you a way to help strengthen families and help them support their transgender and gender expansive students. The two organizations that I'm a part of, COTLAD and KIN, will start offering parent education in the coming months, so parents who don't have knowledge or experience in supporting LGBTQ+ children, especially transgender and gender expansive, can get basic knowledge and learn where to go for resources and support for their children and for themselves. When we have the first training, they said, we will announce it, and I would like to let you know, so you can share it with all of your educational community. This education can, one, the shock-shame and disgust parents may experience when their kids come up to them, and two, the fear and anxiety barrier the kids face in coming up to their parents. When parents are learning and showing increasing acceptance of queer people, their children can have much more confidence in their coming out, that it won't make them lose the love and support of their parents, which are so important to them. Learning families have less to fear, and learning families can grow stronger. Thank you.
After Michelle, we have Roxanne Bash.
Okay. In February, OSPI determined that Le Center School District violated state law related to student discrimination based on gender identity. The federal government has stepped in to fight OSPI on your behalf. I'm not a lawyer, and I cannot address the legal merits of this case, but I'm a retired school psychologist who believes that you are engaging in a politics war that will wind up harming your most vulnerable students. Your restrictive pronoun policy also creates a serious conflict of interest for your psychologists and your counselors. For example, the American School Counselor Association's ethical standards is twelve pages long and references gender, gender expression, or gender identity twenty-six times. The National Association of School Psychologists' ethical standards is thirty-nine pages long and references gender protections for students sixteen times. These gender-related standards in both documents focus on a duty to protect students who might be stigmatized or isolated based on gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation. The student-centered laws that OSPI mandates are not suggestions. They are mandatory for all to protect the most vulnerable, at-risk students. Thank you.
After Roxanne, we have Mary Peterson.
Good evening. My name is Roxanne Bash, and I'm from Ridgefield. I and many others in Clark County care about all gay, lesbian, and transgender students, no matter where they go to school. Students will always be the primary clients of any school district, and parents should always be welcomed as important partners in the education of their children. But there are reasonable limits on that, what parents can expect. Parents don't have a constitutional right to demand schools violate the law. We can't ignore laws we don't like. Parents also don't have a constitutional right to expect school staff to ignore their professional code of ethics by engaging in practices that current research shows are harmful to children. Parents don't have a constitutional right to ask schools to substitute best practices, educational research, and science in favor of a partisan politics or misinformed opinions and irrational fear. I'm at a loss to understand why Le Center School District has decided to spend so much money on what could be a long and expensive battle to reduce the legal protections our state has provided to gay, lesbian, and transgender students. For the sake of every student in your care, whatever their gender or pronoun preferences are, I hope that the law and OSPI prevail.
Next, we have Mary Peterson, and after Mary, we have Bambi Hugle.
Good evening. My name is Mary Peterson. Although I live in Ridgefield, my children and grandchildren live here in Le Center. I've come tonight to speak on behalf of some Le Center parents who would like to share their concerns about the findings of OSPI's investigation of the district but are terrified that their vulnerable children may be targeted for further marginalization if they do. Having been an elementary school teacher for forty-four years, I know that school is a place where children are taught to respect one another and to learn to work together regardless of their differences. Learning about gender diversity is a part of that work. Creating a more inclusive and accepting school environment teaches all children to recognize and resist stereotypes. We teach children to stand up for others, to resist bullying, and to work together. We teach children to follow the rules and the law. OSPI has prescribed six specific corrective actions that Le Center School District should take to rectify the damage done by ignoring state law. For the sake of our gender expansive students, I urge you to be proactive and start implementing these corrective actions now rather than waiting until you are forced to do so. Why wouldn't you want to make Le Center School District more accepting and welcoming of every student? Thank you.
And after that, we have Carissa Martin Kane. Karen, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Beabie Taip, and I live in Ridgefield. Thankfully, there's many school districts in Clark County that have embraced their gender expansive students by adopting policies that not only follow the state law but encourage and celebrate the open use of preferred pronouns and names. Unfortunately, Le Center is not one of them. School is a perfect setting for learning to honor our differences. Acknowledging gender diversity in schools does not necessarily conflict with the values family practices in their homes if they model active empathy to their married partners, parents, and children, neighbors, and colleagues, and strangers. Teaching children to be kind and compassionate in school is not asking them to reject their universal values they learned at home. And if we want students to follow school rules, the adults in their lives must model a respect for the law as well. Our children encounter people with different beliefs and lifestyles when they participate in activities outside of the home. School is no different. There, they learn that every child is unique and that there are many ways to express yourself. Gender diversity education is about teaching students to live and work with others. It comes down to the simple agreement that most families embrace: All children must be treated with kindness and respect, no matter what their gender or pronoun preference. Thank you.
Tyler Long will be next.
I'm a member of the queer community. I have three children, and I live in Ridgefield, in Clark County. It's important to me to support LGBTQ+ students wherever they attend school, so I'm here tonight to express my concerns about the results of the OSPI's extensive investigation of the discrimination allegations based on gender identity. I'm not a lawyer, so I'll let your Seattle attorney, the federal government, and OSPI argue the merits of the case, but from my perspective, OSPI's investigation appears to uncover district policies and procedures that can be extremely harmful to the well-being of a vulnerable group of students who rely on you to protect their interests and provide them with a safe and inclusive learning environment. It's well-known that student learning success is difficult to achieve when their school culture feels hostile and unwelcome. For example, the value of being intentional about pronoun use, asking others about the pronouns they prefer openly, is a sign of respect. When modeled in the classroom every day, it becomes a natural ritual, as common as morning roll call, rather than something that needs to be acknowledged in hushed, shameful whispers. Most Clark County schools recognize that a supportive and positive school climate requires treating every student with dignity and respect, including calling every student by the name and the pronouns they want to use. Most local districts understand the importance of following the law, and I am asking Le Center and Le Center School District to do exactly the same. Thank you.
Day Holmes will be next. Thank you, board, for your time today and for allowing me to speak. I'm from Battleground, but outsiders are coming to chide you, so it's only right that I come to encourage you. I want to thank you for your detailed diligent op-ed that you published last week in Clark County today. It very clearly explained how your positions regarding pronouns and parental involvement are not only rooted in respect for parental rights but are also fully compliant with Washington state law. And yet, here we are, and yet, there's a controversy. So, in light of this, I'd like to point out the inconvenient truth that this situation so clearly highlights about the movement that is so upset with you. There are lessons here for the future. You've agreed to use preferred pronouns but just refuse to announce it to the class. This is unacceptable. You've agreed to use preferred pronouns after involving the parents, yet this is unacceptable. Why is this unacceptable? Well, it's clear, because it's not enough that you use their preferred pronouns for them. You must teach their ideology to every student in every class, period. Also, it's not acceptable that you involve the parents because in their movement, parents are not an authority. The movement's orthodoxies are the only and final authority. So, as a final encouragement to you, I would remind you that all authorities delegated authority, your authority, parents' authority, the state's authority. And the state has given you a prime example in defying laws that they don't like. They declared Washington a sanctuary state. They're in active disobedience of Title IX right now. Follow their example, because ultimately, what's gonna happen with this movement that's coming at you, like all totalitarian movements, they will ultimately force you off of a non-existent middle ground. And so, our guiding principles can either be God, family, country, and objective truth as they have been for 250 years, or it can be a radical gender ideology rooted in statism, but a blend is untenable, and we will support you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dave Holmes, and I am a current resident of this district. I want to thank the board and superintendent Rosenkrantz for your work to protect family values and parental rights. I am troubled that a group of staff members who are charged with teaching, reading, writing, and math believe they know more about raising a family's children than the parents. I've paid taxes in this district for thirty-eight years, and I want you to know, I support you using every cent of those taxes to defend the overreach by a small group of employees and out-of-district citizens who have their own agenda, both of which I know aren't supported by the entire staff or certainly our community. On another related subject, I'm sure the board will soon be involved in bargaining for the next certified contract. I would encourage you to bargain in good faith, but be prepared. The history of the WEA is to drag out bargaining until late August and threaten to strike, which they will threaten. Just continue in good faith to represent the taxpayers of the district. The only thing the WEA hates worse than not getting their way is losing part of their two-and-a-half-month summer off. Threatening a work stoppage in the current educational environment that they've created with our current test scores will not be supported by the community. Let's get back to reading and math the superintendent Rosenkrantz has prescribed and preached since the day he took over. Thank you.
And after Dawn Seaver, we have John Bauer. Dawn Seaver, and then John Bauer.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Seaver. I'm actually from your neighborhood Battleground School District. I mostly really just want to thank you this evening for standing up for Washington families. We all know that there are children in abusive homes, and that's why we have protections in place already. Unfortunately, in Washington, the Washington state policies flip that narrative. Instead of recognizing that these families are the exception, Washington treats them as the rule. Every child is viewed as a probable victim, every parent treated as a probable abuser, and this is wrong. Each January, legislators gather in Olympia to dream of new ways to get in between children and their parents, and the only way to stop it is to stand up and tell them no, which is what you're doing here, and I appreciate that. My only request would be that you would join the Kennewick, Moses Lake, and the Mead School Districts to protect girls' bathrooms, locker rooms, and sports teams and comply with federal regulations. Billy Graham says, courage of contagion. When a brave man takes a stand, his mind will be our office stone. It's my hope that the actions that you and other school districts are taking will inspire others to step up and to join you. Thank you so much.
And after John Bauer, we have Tommy Jensen.
Hello. I'm an educator in Evergreen Public Schools. I was asked to be here-
I was asked to be here as a La Center parent. I want to share the stories of two students of the school board from this year. I have a male student who started wearing feminine clothing at school. He didn't want his parents to know out of fear. He knew his parents did not approve of anything except their son looking traditionally masculine. The parents did eventually find out, leveled both verbal and physical abuse on him. He no longer felt safe in his home, had to start living with a friend. He now has no relationship with his parents. Another student I know hides her preferred name in school because she's scared about what happened if her parents found out. She only tells friends and teachers who trust because she knows that one wrong phone call, one wrong text message, one wrong email, sharing that information could end her fragile peace at home. These are just two stories from this year that I know. How many more am I missing from students who fear sharing their stories of shame and isolation? I cannot say. Those in favor of this policy claim they are simply protecting parents' rights, but what about the right of a student to be safe and welcoming school? This is not a policy that helps an educator protect their students. It is a policy that makes every staff member at the Center Schools a potential informant that closeted trans kids need to fear. Parents are not the dictators of their children. Children are developing human beings, not a piece of property under anyone's ownership, not a parent, not the state, not the federal government. The more you try to mold your children with an iron grip, the more they will slip through your fingers. You must immediately reverse this harmful policy.
My name is Tommy Jensen.
I am part of District Three here in the La Center School District. I have four children, two of which attend elementary school, one in junior high and one in high school. I'm a lifelong resident here in Clark County and just want to express my gratitude for your hard work and what you're doing for the majority of our community. I may not be an expert or have a degree in reading, writing and arithmetic, but I do have a degree in loving my children and communicating all the things that they need to become a good, successful people. And so, you help them to gain those tools as they attend school. And then, we at Homeless Parents discuss a lot of those issues, good and bad, that are taught, and then, we a lot of times come up with good resolutions that my wife and I feel are appropriate for our small family. So I just want to stand here and just say thank you for what you're doing and keep holding the line, because if you guys don't, then I don't know who will.
Thank you Tommy. Next we have David Lee, and after David Lee, we have Justine Stimmel.
Good evening, David Lee, resident here at the Center. My wife and I raise two kids. My daughter goes to Battleground High School. My son has been here since kindergarten. I'm here to support Peter's decision. We feel that family values are super important, especially in this community. We raise our kids here. We know a lot of the parents that are here, so if you're not from here, I don't see why you are here. So my main goal is to raise my kids as a product, right? We're putting a product, our children are a product of values, or whatever your beliefs are, that's fine. We don't have any issue with other people's beliefs or how they want to be raised or whatever, that's great. Everybody deserves that, but it's not the school's decision to encourage or put kids down or whatever. Like, if kids want to act that way or put that in front of their name, that's fine. But my kids, I don't want my kids to have to go to school and go, "Why is this?" And whatever, you know, our beliefs are very important to us, and so I appreciate you guys standing up for the parents and the people that live here in this community and want to be sacred. Thank you.
Thank you David. Next we have Justine Stimmel, and after Justine, we have Dawn Land. Dawn Land will be after Justine.
Good evening to a very courageous superintendent and school board here. Thank you for the chance to speak. I'm Justine Stimmel, a parent of three kids in the La Center Schools here, and I've been involved in this policy conversation from the start. Like many, I was disturbed when teachers asked my children their pronouns. It was inappropriate and it rightfully raised concerns. I strongly support the pro-family policy for gender inclusive schools 3211, 3211P. The superintendent board have been transparent and committed to partnering with parents. I deeply respect Pete, Craig, Amanda, Dory, Eric, Sam, and to past board members Todd, Wendy and Wynne, who have served. Your courage in the face of adversity shows true leadership, and I thank you for that. OSPI is completely in the wrong here, let's be clear. La Center has followed the law and supports all students. Every request for names and pronouns has been honored. The only ask is that teachers not collect pronouns publicly in class, a private matter that belongs with families. That's not discrimination, it's common sense, and many families in our community support this policy. 3211P rightly strengthened the role of families in education. Schools should teach children how to think respectfully, not to what to think, and parents absolutely deserve a seat at the table. Thank you for being committed to serve, standing by your values and your students and for the families. Thank you.
Good evening. Next we have Dawn Land, and after Dawn, we have Darlene Kula.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Land, and I am a mom of three from the Tacoma area. I have been fighting for the protection of women and children against the threats of transgender ideology for years. Oh, I'm sorry. I've heard from so many families about schools have captured kids with the concept of transgender and then kept the child's new gender identity secret from parents. I would like to thank the members of the La Center School Board for refusing to keep secrets from parents. Children should never be denied the protections of their strongest advocates, those who know them best and love them more than anyone else, their parents. Thank you for putting the mental well-being of students first by refusing to shut out their parents. Another way women and children are harmed by transgender ideology is sports. Boys who call themselves girls or women and compete in sports leagues meant for females is unfair and dangerous for women and girls. The organization called Boys vs. Women collects data on how male high school athletes will beat female Olympic athletes in track and field competitions. For example, in the 100 meter, 200 meter, 400 meter and 800 meter races, none of the female Olympic athletes' performances met the qualifying time for the same events for high school males. That's pretty dramatic. Women have fought long and hard to have our own spaces and our own sports. When women and girls are forced to compete against men and boys, women lose the opportunities that have taken 50 years to build. We cannot grant special rights to one group of people when doing so takes rights away from women and girls. It should not be a controversial statement to say that girls deserve their sports. Thank you.
Next will be Amrita Stark.
Hello, my name is Darlene Kula. My husband and I raise seven kids in the La Center School District. We have 15 grandchildren. We are founders of Camp Hope of Battleground, and I was the executive director there for several years. I was a senior school teacher for many, many years. All this to say that I believe I can represent the parents of the community. Our kids need us to be the adults in the room when they're going through the challenges of life. This means that we listen to them and have compassion for them when they're struggling with issues, including identity issues. And a lot of times, they change their mind back after a few months or a year, and it's called watchful waiting, and I've seen it over and over. I want you all to know that I and many other citizens of our community are so thankful that you're standing up for the parents' rights and for our children in respect for all your students, understanding that your job is to teach the students academics and support parents where you can. I also want to encourage you to keep standing strong for what is the right thing to do, even if it's hard. This is the best lesson that we can teach our students and children. Thank you so much.
Next we have Amrita Stark. And after Amrita, we have Janelle Chamberlain.
Can you hear me? All right. My name's Amrita Stark, she/her, and I'm a pediatrician at Child and Adolescent Clinic. My partners and I care for children in La Center and all across southwest Washington. I am compelled to speak up today as a pediatrician against the La Center School District's appeal of OSPI's ruling against its gender identity policy. The current policy of "don't ask, don't teach" gender identity is harmful to all children, not only trans and non-binary youth. This policy silences curiosity, dissuades learning and discourages compassion. To be clear, talking about gender identity does not cause gender confusion, and requiring teachers to inform parents about the pronouns of non-binary or trans youth puts kids at risk. Asking someone their pronouns, telling them yours, is a simple, welcoming act that signals safety. Everyone has pronouns, most of us just take it for granted. Gender non-conforming youth have higher rates of depression and anxiety, but if they are accepted in their identity, their rates of mental health problems equalize with their peers. Think of that, better than any medicine, any therapy, just accepting and acknowledging a person can keep them from becoming suicidal. I wish every kid felt emotionally and physically safe to be themselves with their families, but kids know their families best and we should trust them. For many, it is not an option to be themselves at home. They can face physical violence, emotional abuse, homelessness or isolation, but if they can be themselves at school with peers and teachers who accept them, it can be so powerful. They are more likely to succeed academically and socially. I strongly encourage La Center to reverse course and follow OSPI's recommendations to allow children to be themselves and respect their identity.
Hi there, I'm Janelle Chamberlain. I am a member of the community with my two children and my husband. I fully support La Center School District and Superintendent Peter Rosenkrantz and the board, thank you very much. The recent ruling with OSP is deeply concerning but also undermines one of the most sacred relationships in our society, and that's between our parent and our child. Our schools should be places of learning, growth and respect, not a battlefield for ideology mandates that disregard the values of the family that you guys serve. The assertion that La Center and staff educators are discriminating is not only unfounded but also insulting in the hardworking professionals in the district who deeply care for all of our students, and thank you guys for that. The district reproach pronouns has always been thoughtful and respectful and legally sound. It allows space for the students to share if they choose while also ensuring parents are kept informed and involved, a balance that OSP refuses to acknowledge. The directive that OSP is withholding critical information from parents to judge whether families are safe or not based on subjective standards, to bypass parental input in a life-altering decision about gender identity is absolutely unacceptable. Parents are not obstacles to their children's development, they are their greatest advocates. Superintendent Peter, thank you very much. You're absolutely right, the role of the parents cannot be sidelined. The suggestion that the government agencies know better of how to love our children, committed families is not only arrogant but it's also dangerous. Our children need guidance from people who know them best. Distance policymakers who have never met them, it's wrong. This is not about denying the students dignity or respect, it's about preserving trust, transparency and a foundational of parents.
Thank you, Janelle. And after Kimberly Elman, we have Thomas Newman.
Kimberly?
I'm not seeing Kimberly. We're going to move on to Thomas Newman, and after Thomas Newman, we have Jeanette Schattart.
I'm very proud of you folks. First of all, I want to say that I'm actually a resident of La Center for 51 years. We've had five children educated in La Center Public Schools, and five of them graduated from here and all have college degrees. My wife is also a retired teacher from La Center, and Peter, you know Terry, and we're very proud of you. One of the things that I want to talk about is my personal feelings about education. My father had a ninth grade edu...excuse me, eighth grade education, my mother had a ninth grade education. My two older brothers dropped out of high school, but I went to a rigorous public school where they taught me how to read, write and do math very well. And because of that, I was able to have my own career and my own business and a very successful life. And this is the thing that teachers have to realize, that they're teaching people facts, figures and things that they need to succeed. And I'm really, really disappointed in all the people who come from outside of the Center to tell us how we should be raising our kids and what our policy should be. I'm just going to make it very quick. I did graduate quite some time ago in 1969. I never knew of any problem, any youth being bullied in our school because of their gender. Teachers were not concerned with that, they were concerned with us getting an education. And I'd like to...the only thing I'd like to admonish the board and the superintendent and principals, that when they hire, we'll be very careful to select out those people who do not understand that as a teacher, they're an educator, not a doctor. And thank you very much.
Next we have Jeanette, and after Jeanette, we have Odilia Zuckermin.
Hello, my name's Jeanette. I am one of these gender questioning people. Seven, eight years ago, I wore makeup for the first time and had dangly earrings and that kind of altered my life. So that was really cool. It then took me, you know, going out in a dress for the first time with my then-girlfriend and now-wife to kind of realize that this was more of a thing, and slowly, slowly, slowly coming out of the closet. And I was not out to my parents for the next three years until I finally was like at a foreign thing where they were all about being open about one thing you couldn't be open about anyone with. And I went out with my parents and it was the happiest moment of my life at that moment. And fast forward a few more years, I have a girls' night out with people who are wearing dresses and it's wonderful, and I'm happy again. And I'm happy, happy, happy to be living a life where I can just exist in my clothes and exist in my face and exist in my hair and not have someone threaten to chop it off, just because I exist. I heard a lot of parents tonight, and none of them mentioned how they would support their kid if they came out as trans or if they came out as gender questioning. None of them mentioned whether they would help them buy their first dresses, none of them mentioned whether they would put on makeup for the first time to see who it even looked, or teach them how to put on makeup instead of making them have to learn how to make makeup in like YouTube videos or 50 years down the road when they're just surrounded by other transgender women and queers and having their first night out with people that they are happy with and that respect them and treat them with kindness and dignity. I just...I'm now a bus driver and I'm so happy that I can do that where I can have kids ask me, "Am I a boy?" and "Am I a girl?" And I can just say, "Well, I'm a really wonderful human being." And I don't have to answer like that way or have to say anything because I'm a human. And then I can be like, "Well, I'm also a trans woman," you know, and that's fun too. And I wear dresses and I'm really cute and I'm really adorable and I'm loved by my family now.
My name is Odilia Zuckermin. I use she/her pronouns. I work for the YWCA of Clark County as a sexual assault prevention specialist. This means I teach healthy relationships to high schoolers, including topics like consent and boundaries all over the county. Using preferred pronouns is not an ideology, it's about respecting someone's identity. This doesn't have to be so political, yet here we are. This idea of safety is so unimaginable to this school board that this is where we've come. I've met a lot of transphobic people in this world. If there's one transphobic parent in La Center, this policy will harm their kid, point-blank. Okay, I've said it before and I've said it again, you're causing harm to students in La Center every day this policy continues. This isn't really something that should be up for debate. This issue has become so politicized, and while we all stand up here, youth continue to be harmed. Why not listen to the queer and trans students this is about? Why not listen to the queer and trans people in this room? You're making policies about them, yet ignoring all of the voices you've heard explaining this policy's harmful impacts. Truly doesn't make sense. People's safety isn't something that should ever be up for debate, yet you continue to use these taxpayer dollars to take away queer and trans students' safety. I've been here for years talking about this, and I've seen no movement on the board. It's really, really sad that this is something the community is still having to come and fight for when you've heard from so many people that this could be causing harm. I don't understand how you're still not sure what to do about this. It's truly unimaginable that this is happening.
Thank you.
Derek Shaper is next. Hi, my name is Murna Leha. I live in La Center, just a couple blocks away. I love this community. I am speaking here tonight to thank Superintendent Peter Rosenkrantz and Chair Craig Whitehead and the La Center School Board for the amazing job you're doing for the school, the parents, and all the students who attend here. You've been successful in teaching the students reading, math, science, history, and music, creating multiple pathways for students to attend college, learn trades, join the military, or the workforce. You've shown great respect for all of the student body as well as the parents. You and your staff have treated students even-handed with equity. No constitutional rights to free speech have been taken away, in fact, you have fostered more freedom of speech. Each student has a freedom of speech to say what they want, for a grown-up or not. You, Pete, have strong bonds in our La Center community. I appreciate that you realize the students belong to their parents, not to the school, not to the government. These students should never keep secrets from their parents. When I did contract work for the U.S. Marshals digitizing 5,000 sex offender files in Clark County, I was appalled at the manipulation and grooming of children and how kids were encouraged to keep secrets from their parents, therefore allowing the children's abuse to go undetected for months or years. Let's foster communication between children and their parents. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Murna. Next we have Derek Shaper, and after Derek we've got Al Fila.
Hello, everybody. My name is Derek Shaper, and I have two kids who attend La Center schools. I'd like to take them up to sincerely thank Superintendent Rosenkrantz and the La Center School Board for standing with the families of our community, something that is not only foundational, but increasingly under pressure across our state. In a time when the state of Washington has pushed policies that sideline parents, you have shown courage, integrity, and respect for the vital role families play in their children's lives. You listened to the concerns of the community and made it clear that parents are not the enemy, they're partners. Your leadership affirms that schools and families must work together, not opposition, but to support our kids. Thank you for standing up and doing what's right, even if it's not easy. We see it, we're grateful, and we continue to support you.
Al Fila, I'm a lifelong member of La Center, been here for seventy-three years. Started a school here in 1957, graduated in 1969. Okay, last month I got up and made a shout-out to National Vietnam Veterans Day, and the thought was that somebody would go home and do something, you know, whether it be put up a flag, talk to your family, go to work, tell them, you know, do something to honor Vietnam veterans. Okay, well, today, since the next holiday we got coming up is Memorial Day, I'm here to give a shout-out because on the 26th of May, right up here at the cemetery, American Legion Post 189 is going to have a sermon at 11 o'clock, you know, and make sure you all come. Also want to point out there's a memorial up there dedicated to those-- it says, well, "Those soldiers who died during World War I." I'm going to mention their names. Harry Quanter, McKinley Moe, Angus Nicholson, George Myers, David Thornquist, Samuel Tenno. And one of those, Angus Nicholson, he died in November of 1918, so more than likely, his husband was back home, found out the war was over, and then a few years later they found out he wasn't coming home. So I encourage you all to be there on 26th of May, and God bless America, the First Amendment is alive as well here in La Center, Washington.
Okay, that concludes the public comment section of our meeting here this evening.